Dr. Rennie, we do have Councilman White and Dr. Aldridge online.
Okay, Verizon time says it's noon, so we are going to begin this meeting. This is a council work session on creating a new zone for business park districts. And with me is Councilman Leyborn, online is Councilman White and Councilwoman Aldridge. And I'm sure there's probably a few of the public listening in, just as a reminder, we do not take public input during work council work sessions. So, I presume either Mr. Bloom or Mr. White will start us off?
Chair, members of council, Charles Bloom playing in the development director here with Connor White, planner two with the city. Over the course of the last, once about three months, we've been working with Cheyenne Leeds and AVI and staff to create a business park zone district. This is primarily intended to be established in advance of the North Range Business Park annexation, but it could be used in other areas of the community. You all should have a, do you all have the draft ordinance in front of you?
No.
Perfect. No?
Looks like we just have an agenda in front of us.
Okay, we'll make sure we get the draft ordinance to you, but we've covered everything in the PowerPoint that is here.
Pardon? I'm sure you guys will explain it fine. If I have questions, they'll ask.
Would you like me to go make some copies?
No, we're okay.
All right, so.
Councilman Leyborn, do you want to, do you want to copy? Are you okay with the PowerPoint?
I'm okay with this.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, the purpose of this is to provide flexibility for business parks and to encourage a variety of uses that could go there. When we were looking at different applications for business parks, it became apparent that we didn't have a zone district that would specifically work exclusively for North Range. That is governed by a planned unit development that was established under the county regulations. So we tried to really create a zone district that actually looked at incorporating a bunch of the approved uses there and also uses that we would commonly see in business parks that are near interstates or near other highways. So the uses you'll see as described really are intended to complement the business park. What you'll see in an ordinance that will move forward is it'll have a large list of permitted uses that will be incorporated into our use table. Those uses will be another column in that use table specifically for the BP zone district. As you're aware, with our use table, they're all grouped into different subgroups. We have civic uses, which are ones like athletic fields, municipal buildings, those items. You have service uses, which are the ones, a variety of uses, including indoor entertainment recreation facility. And these are even service businesses that you would see in our community business district. But what we're proposing to allow in the BP district are these as permitted uses. This is slide one. We have multiple slides here. We wanted to make sure that we kept the options open for a variety of uses. We don't want to be too limiting.
Before we go on to the next slide, how do how do home occupations fit into a business park?
Chair Connor White, planning and development department. So the reason that we have home occupations in here is as we get to most likely the next slide or a later slide, under, actually, it's when we get to conditional uses, we do have something under our conditional uses for mixed use dwellings. So if it was a mixed use dwelling building where you had commercial on the bottom, residential above, that residential above could have somebody who wants to run a small office out of their unit or something like that. So we just wanted to have home occupation in here just as kind of a catch. We aren't allowing like single family homes, things like that. But the home occupation would be there for if there is a mixed use building in one of these business parks to allow for somebody to also then maybe run something limited out of their residential unit.
Yes, they're lodging their hotel or motel room though, right?
Chair, essentially, we're just trying to avoid a potential headache that we could envision in the future. There have been some cases and other jurisdictions where I've worked where a PUD has excluded home occupations. And then that becomes a problem in the future. So we just want to make sure we don't have that here. But service uses you also see that are in the use table that are in other districts or everything from from service businesses, nail salons, those types of things, those aren't being, those are being added here. But we also have a variety of uses such as kennels and animal cares and and other things that have not been included in this zone district. Other uses that are permitted are convenience stores, smaller retail, even large scale retail and grocery store supermarkets, all the different items that you could see along a major business corridor that could be used to help combine trips of people working in this business park between heading home or going to work. And then also convenient so they could get items without having to travel back into the community. So lots of different uses. The industrial uses, we have added data center, limited industrial, modern industrial and general industrial. What is excluded from that is heavy industrial, so you wouldn't be seeing those large industrial uses such as junkyard salvage yards, those types of items in the business park district. We did include rail yards and maintenance buildings because this is intended, since we have a couple of rail yards around town, we have a few of them. This is intended to make this an option that could be available for the Swan Ranch Business Park. Again, final for permitted uses, we didn't leave public service uses out. We added these uses as well, so they could be included in the business park zone district. Regarding conditional uses, these are uses that the Board of Adjustment would have the final say on. That decision making authority has been passed on to the Board of Adjustment. These are ones that we would be adding in the Business Park Zone District. As Connor had mentioned, we have live, work and mixed use dwellings. A live work type of facility is one where you would have a business and you could have a residential component in there, so you could live and work in the same building. We don't have any examples of that are business parks right now, but we didn't want to exclude that, that use. Likewise, we have the mixed use dwelling, which those are primarily characterized as having office or commercial use that would have a residential component. Specifically in the business parks, this residential component for mixed use building would be anything that is over 10% of the square footage of the principal structure. We can get into that a little bit more. We're going to talk about a new concept that's introduced called a caretaker unit. We have a variety of civic uses that are also proposed. These again are conditional use approval. These are more of a just in case, we would need these in the future. Those are items such as community assembly, which are, they can be churches, they can be event centers. Also, primary and secondary educational centers, colleges, universities, those things could be included. Commercial uses, we do have outdoor sales, display area, those items. Those are subject to conditional use review and approval. The reason for that is just to make sure that they are in character with the area. One thing I'd mention is we had added a new definition that is called a caretaker unit. This is something that a lot of the large industrial users are looking at. For example, Precious Cat, which was built in 2019, they actually have a residential unit that is in their building. So when they have fellow employees are visiting from out of town, they can stay in that unit. So we have some actual criteria on the caretaker unit here that basically says it has to be subordinate, it's going to be reviewed with the site plan, and it cannot exceed more than 10% of the floor area. This is an example that I had found recently of a retail development, which actually has a caretaker unit that's in it. So this is kind of how they could blend in. This could be in the back of a building, could be on the second floor, it could be one or two caretaker units.
On the caretaker unit on the 10%, did was that just an arbitrary figure of, have other places, other communities used that? I just didn't know where you came up with that percentage.
10% was a number that we had all essentially just agreed would work. If you have a 10,000 square foot building, 10% would just be 1,000 square feet, which is more than enough for a caretaker unit.
Okay.
Another item is we assigned a lot type for the business park. Again, in the industrial district, we use that as our, we use the industrial district as our guide. The maximum lot coverage we have is 90%. That's the same as our current industrial district. Regarding the setbacks, we really made it more contextual based on property lines and streets. We have it set so all buildings need to be setback 25 feet from all property lines that are adjacent to streets and 10 feet from all other internal property lines. And then 25 feet from property line shared with another zone district. So really trying to focus the business uses in the park. Try to make sure that if there's an area where it's adjacent to another one, that there's a little additional separation. Regarding parking, we do not have any parking minimums proposed. One thing we've noticed in working with Leeds and other developments is the users that are coming into these parks, they have very specific standards for parking. Those standards don't necessarily align with our parking minimums and maximums. So what we've proposed is that there would not be parking minimums within that business park. They would essentially provide the parking that they would believe works for their business. The other item is there is a proposed landscape modification that is fairly significant. This landscaping changes our tree point schedule and it bases the trees on the linear frontage along roads. This is the tri-state site on the corner of Horizon Drive and Round Top. This was recently constructed in the county under the county site plan review. What we have here is a lot that has about 1,870 linear frontage on both of those rights of way. What we would see with this development would be trees that would be planted tolling about 19 trees on site to represent the right of way landscaping that could be distributed pursuant to that second bullet point under tree point alternatives. Essentially, the trees must be within 100 feet of the right of way or they can be within 15 feet of a parking lot or than 20 feet of the building. We also provided an option for a developer to substitute one tree for six shrubs. Say they want to put some additional shrubs that are adjacent to the building or add a gateway feature. If someone is building, constructing a parking lot onsite, the parking lot landscaping standards would still apply. So this is just the landscaping that would be outside of the parking lot. In looking at this landscaping proposal, we looked at the end car facility that is located in North Range and we tried to reverse engineer to get to something that kind of mirrored that type of development. Do you have any questions or comments on the landscaping? All right, a problem that we've had with a lot of our industrial developments.
Chairman? We do have a question, sorry. Can you use your microphone?
We have a hand raised.
We do, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Um, Councilman White, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Jen. Mr. Chair, through you to Charles. Charles, what what did you base these landscaping modifications on? And, you know, we, we hear a lot of communication from businesses and developers that are landscaping. Our landscaping rules are a bit strict. So I just kind of wanted to, to know where your idea for these modifications came from? And if you think, if you think this is being perhaps still more strict than we need to be, just, I just wanted you to clarify that for me if you could.
Chair, through you to Councilmember White. No, we really looked at the different business parks we have and the different requirements we have in our unified development code. If we were to follow unified development code to a T, there would be requirement for street trees. There'd be a requirement for a lot of landscaping that needs to be maintained. And that usually has been problematic. A lot of folks have been out to the Bison Business Park and they've seen the Microsoft data center that was constructed with the trees out there. We're trying to avoid that. In coming up with this idea, we really looked at that North Range Business Park and tried to reverse engineer what we're seeing out there. Again, with the end car facility, you know, they have some parking lot landscaping, but they've taken trees and they've grouped them and put them in different areas. And it really does look tasteful based on the large scale development you see out there. I mean, this picture that we see on the slide, it does show some of the landscaping on the south side of Horizon Drive that is part of the Property Owners Association for North Range. Those are smaller pine trees that we, we would actually look at larger pine trees being planted at establishment, but that's about 19 to 20 trees that you see that are kind of grouped and clustered along that southern portion of Horizon Drive. So in, in looking at it and trying to do the calculations, we really felt that this was most representative of what we were seeing at North Range and what could be done to provide some aesthetic value by not going overkill on the landscaping.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the explanation. And I'm glad that staff is, is looking at alternatives. Because as we continue to encourage development and commercial development, I know that this always seems to be an issue. And so I think, I think with regards to landscaping requirements in commercial development areas and even in business parks, I really do think we need to take another look at what we require in the UDC because it certainly kind of relates to some of the wire wise issues that we are working on as well. So so I appreciate that staff is really looking at modifications. And I think perhaps may need even more modifications going forward, but I appreciate the answer. Thank you, Charles.
Councilman Leyborn, you had a question?
Yes, I was on a tour not too long ago with the Leeds folks and we looked at the Bison Business Park. Certainly, over the years, there's been a variety of different ways these things have been done. But looking at the North Range, their landscaping has really survived over time and is very attractive in a way that I don't see in some of the other business parks. Is their irrigation maintained by their community association or how, how does that work? Because as I understand it, in other business, is that correct that it's maintained that way?
Mr. Bloom?
Chair, members of the council, yes, we had discussions with Leeds and Dante Rush, who is here. He had indicated that one of the, I believe, one of the first things he had to do here was try to make sure there's a maintenance contract on that property owners associations landscaping. So they do do maintenance, it is irrigated. And they have a, correct me if I'm wrong, but they have a landscape crew that does go out to maintain the landscaping at North Range. Is that correct?
Good afternoon, council. This is Dante Rush from Cheyenne Leeds. To answer your question, we actually don't have any irrigation out there. We recently just shut off water taps. So we did, but we weren't utilizing it. So we're not irrigating anything out there currently.
And my recollection is that over time, it's been well established. Would, would that be correct?
The irrigation system?
No, the trees.
Yes, that is correct.
I mean, over, over the years, because of that, I mean, it seems to me that, that continual use until that basic design has been established makes sense. But in other cases, and I believe it makes sense at that, in that case, because you had an overall management effort. Am I correct that other business parks are not that way? Do not have a community management and over multiple properties?
Chair, it's, as our understanding that regarding the business parks in town, they, they all have a little different variation of how they're managed. Cheyenne Leeds has been working hard to create property owners associations for their business parks. You have Campstool, you have Bison, you have North Range, those have their own like Swan Ranch. They, I'm not aware of them having a landscape plan or a landscape group and those are all independently managed. There's other business parks that are, are smaller, like the one out east, east of Campstool, Volk's Properties, those are, again, that's a, a business park like environment. But those are all individually maintained. So really the way maintenance goes on, on, in business parks, depends on how it was structured by the developer. I mean, what, what Leeds has done is Leeds has included a lot of common landscaping for the business park in common lands. And they've figured out ways to, to maintain that.
Well, my point would be, we have a great example at the North Range Business Park. Very attractive. You can see the trails on the picture here. It's really very attractive and was actually well designed. So when I go out to the Swan, I see a lot of dead trees. And that's, I think that that's the heart of the problem here with developers and not only in business parks, but elsewhere. Plant the tree, but then don't maintain it. And then we don't seem to have any mechanism to concede that that irrigation system is maintained. So I just wanted to make that point. There is, there is a better way here. There is a proper way here. And I hope that we can take that into consideration because it does make, it does make a big difference. Thank you.
Councilwoman Aldridge, do you have any questions at this point before we move on?
I do not, but thanks for asking.
All right, there's been a little bit of a delay on the clicker working again. Went backwards. Okay, perfect. All right, other design principles that are proposed. One of our issues we see in our, our industrial parks, our industrial areas is our landscaping buffer yards for outdoor storage. Right now, they're required to have a level three buffer yard, which you see on the far right side here. Basically, it's a 25 foot wide landscape strip where you're required to have a lot of trees that are planted in that buffer yard as well as shrubs every 10 feet. It's pretty intense. In looking at our outdoor screening requirements, we really don't have too many developments that have actually complied with this because it really is challenging. And when you're in the large business park environments, it is hard to meet that and it's hard to maintain that because they're so wide open. So what we've dropped this down to is a proposed screening method of essentially a six foot wall or fence that's going to screen it from a street view. So this would be what we would see for outdoor storage yards. You'd still have the landscaping that we just talked about in the prior slide that would be there. But in addition to that, that any areas for outdoor screening, they would have a solid fence that would provide a visual barrier between districts. So if this area is owned BP and you have a residential district next door, what we would see are level two buffer yards, which this is the zoomed in version. Those are essentially 15 foot wide landscaped areas. You would be expected to provide these trees in addition to the trees that are noted on the earlier slide. So there could be additional, additional trees that would be provided. Yeah, no solid fence for a buffer yard between this district and residential districts. And typically what we would see is, I, I wouldn't anticipate this business park zone district budding up immediately to a residential neighborhood. The Business Park Zone District, you know, could be located in an area where maybe there's residential, but that would be across the street. Possibly there could be residential zone property in new business parks that are plotted, but wouldn't see anything that would be done today.
So I have a question then, assuming that, you know, we have the area that Metta is developing, developed out and the area immediately south of that then becomes residential and the residential is developed after the fact. Would there be any, do we require any buffing or screening on the part of the residential developers since they're up next? Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Chair, members of the committee, no, there would not be any other required buffer yard on the lesser property, in this case, a residential. The next item we have discussed on this that is included in this proposed zone district is a little bit of simplicity with the sign height. Right now, our sign height allowances in the industrial zone districts are based on its proximity to the street. Where if you're close to the street, you're limited to a certain height. And as you step back to at least 25 feet, then you hit that 20 foot threshold. What we have added here is just the allowance that any sign regardless of placement on the property can be up to 20 feet in height. As you can see there, this is just a, a drawing that was pulled up online that kind of gives you the scale of what 20 feet looks like, you know, as compared to a pedestrian. Also, there is an allowance for signage to be placed on prominent structures like, like water towers. This is a proposal that we had from Leeds for the Bison Business Park Water Tower. I believe that this is still under review. The square footage and in area might be a little bit larger than allowed, but it's still a discussion point. But this amendment would allow for signage to be placed on prominent structures.
So my question there, so you're limiting the size of the signage on the water tower?
Chair, through you to the council, yes, there is a square foot allowance for signage in the district based on, on lot size. So it would measure the square footage out and it could have a limit.
Okay. You know, if they wanted to paint a mural on there, I wouldn't have a problem with that. So that's something maybe we can discuss.
Chair, through you to the council, we can take that into consideration. This isn't the final draft of the ordinance. We have the ability to, to make some changes based on the feedback we received here today.
And real quick, Chair, through you, Connor White, planning and development department. I believe when it comes to, for the example of like the water tower, a mural probably could be any size. It's when it gets into signage where they are actually saying this is Bison Business Park.
It's when it gets into signage where they are actually saying this is Bison Business Park. That's getting into now we have to move it into signage. If it was a mural of, you know, a herd of bison running across it, that's very different than having a sign that says this is.
That makes sense. I under- I understand that.
So it's, it, I don't think it would limit the mural portion. This would basically just, it's to have something in there so that we have something for this, if they're doing like a sign like this is Bison Business Park.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation, Mister White.
And Chair members of council, here's some potential locations for this new zone district. Um, the first one would be North Range because we would zone this. Uh, we would zone North Range, the Business Park Zone District at the time of annexation, which will occur this year. Some other candidates, uh, could be Campstool Business Park, Bison Business Park, Swan Ranch. Um, also the High Plains Business Park and a new business parks that come um in, in any other area of the community. Um, with that, that's our very brief overview on, on the Business Park Zone District. Um, I'm open for any questions that you all may have and.
Mister Laborne, you're here in the room. Do you have any questions? Councilman Aldrich?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, through you, I, I'm just curious. What do you foresee as being any, um, or if there are any tax implications, um, tax collections, um, for our community?
Yeah, can you repeat the question?
Well, Chair.
The tax implications for the city as opposed to the county, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, well, yes, since we're looking at, um, this would happen uh primarily through, uh, in, in situations where we're looking at annexation.
Uh, Chair, through you to members of the council, um, the taxation, it, it would change based on us incorporating land in the city. We would collect our eight mills and taxes. I don't have any specific data on lands that would be annexed with me right now. Uh, the county's taxation would remain the same. They still get their twelve mills regardless of if it's in the city or in the unincorporated county. Um, the assessor will still um assess the properties uh the same as it would um, based on use. So for example, in an industrial building, they tax the land and then they tax the structure as well. Um, they would still continue to do so in the North Range Business Park. I wouldn't expect or anticipate any differences uh with the way they calculate their taxation, because it's just a building.
As a follow-up, um, Councilman Rennie, um, so you're not anticipating at this point that we would try and set these up to um establish any type of a special tax district or a, a similar structure to a URA uh where we would be basically freezing a baseline of a tax collection or revenue. And then the additional funding that's collected going back into the business park. Is that correct?
Chair through you, um, that is correct. There will be nothing added uh to create a special tax district as a result of this, of a zone district being created or implemented on any property.
Thank you.
Mister White, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, I would like, I, um, Jennifer.
Chairman, I do have, um, senior planner Seth Lloyd with his hand raised. I wanted to add a little bit of information, if you'd allow.
Mister Lloyd.
Mister Chair, members of the committee, um, or the council, I should say. Uh, I just want to clarify the signage allowance that's the BP is proposing a little bit. Um, one of the issues we have in our code is our neighborhood identification signs or business park identification signs, commercial business identification signs. These neighborhood-wide ones are very limited in their size and height. And that's what the business park um allowance is changing. Um, normal business park properties already have pretty generous signage allowances and can already put signs on their structures. It's just that if it identifies the neighborhood or the business park, um, those signs would be much more limited. So the idea here is to allow the business park to put their logo on a water tower on a larger sign. Um, the individual property owners already can, but the business park itself can't.
Thank you, Mister Lloyd. I'd like to hear, um, either from Mister Emmons or Mister Rushton, since they're kind of our partners in all this and and I just want to know if they have any, any comments at all.
Uh, Count. And on council president Brad Emmons AVI, um, thanks for giving us the opportunity. Um, as a little background, we have been meeting for about three or four months on this, so we do um, have give, been able to give some input and work back and forth with uh staff. Uh, one thing I wanted to point out, I didn't hear it here, but uh, this is set up for large acreages of land, so the you cannot just go and do a single lot. As BP, you have to have uh over three hundred and twenty acres. And so it really is to do a, um, a large uh area of land. The other thing that we really wanted to push out, and I think is good for business, is this will help speed uh projects to market. Uh, in, in the Campstool Business Parkway, there's a piece of land that uh wanted to be, it's smaller, but it's one, one and a half, two acres. I've changed it from HI to CB to put a hotel there, then the hotel left, and then they wanted to do storage on the thing. So then we rezoned it to HI. Um, then they wanted to put a little um office building on it, so we rezoned it to LI. Um, to this day, it still isn't developed. I think a site plan's coming in, but none of those items ever had any public comment or council comment when we came through the, through this, this body to change those zones. And I think that's what we're really trying to get with this, is that if the business park gets zoned like this in the beginning, those uses are allowed and we don't have to continually come in. I mean, that's a three-month process to come through. And so I think the major goal was to get this set up so that we could help when Leeds has a client or somebody wants to come in, we could speed that project through the process um, from a zoning standpoint. I mean, obviously, we still have to go through the um, site plan process and make sure all that we get everything, um, the rules uh put in place, but I think that was a kind of the goal that, that, that the North Range Business Park has been able to be able to adjust quickly to the uses that wanted to go on each of those properties.
Okay, um, Mister Emmons or Mister Bloom, perhaps you can answer. How was the acreage of like a half section determined? Because even a quarter section is a large, large development.
Uh, we had bounced around a couple of different ideas. The section of six hundred and forty acres, um, we had essentially just divided that into and went down to the three hundred and twenty acres.
So anything from eighty acres to a hundred and sixty and, or eighty-two, three-twenty is still gonna be subject to our current landscaping requirements?
Chair through you, that is correct. Um, if we look at this, the map that's put up there, North Range Business Park, it's the purple and the blue that you see there off of Round Top. That is essentially one section plus a little bit more. So your minimal size for these business parks would have to be half of that. Um, business parks like Bison, Campstool, Swan Ranch, North Range, High Plains, uh, those easily meet that criteria. Um, and anything smaller than three hundred and twenty acres, it's likely not going to be a business park.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And, and we were worried about somebody that just had an, an intersection, a couple lots on an intersection coming in and grabbing this zone. And we did, we, I, I think we all felt that that should come through the council if, if uses are changing on a small uh thing, those should come before the council. So I do think we were kind of estimating that three-twenty was a good number, but I don't think there was great.
It's like anything else. If it doesn't work, we can always modify it if we have to. Thank you, Mister Emmons. Colleagues, any other questions? No hands raised? Cool. Thank you all for the information. What's the next step? You'll do a little more refining and then we will be seeing it in public service committee?
Uh, Chair, uh, through you to council, Connor White, planning and development department. This will actually be going to planning commission on September third.
Okay.
Uh, in two weeks. And then, yes, you will see it in front of council in early to mid-September.
Got it. All right, thank you. All right. If there's no other questions, thank, Mister Laborne.
Well, I, it isn't a question, it's a comment. Um, when I look at that map and see those four business parks and recollect how they came to be and how fortunate we are to have that kind of uh activity. To me, it just makes sense that we take this step basically so that uh, some of the things that uh have been discussed here are more uh, easel, well, reasonably, I guess you could say, adjusted. So, um, um, thanks. This is a very interesting and I'm glad we're having this uh opportunity to do this. And obviously, perhaps someday there'll be a fifth and a sixth and
There will.
we'll have a better process uh because of the experiences that we've learned from. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank all of you that have put the work into this so far and uh thank you for providing all the information today. So we are adjourned.